We started. Okay. Call it. Credible allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under our, indivisible, with dignity and justice for all.
Hello Pastor.
That's pretty. Dear only Father, we thank you so much for the beautiful weather you've given us. Thank you for giving us enough rain to get some green back in the grass. We see in this fall season, Lord, that you even taught us that we can find beauty in death, and we thank you for that as well. But today, Lord, we ask you to just be with this meeting, Lord. A lot of leadership, a lot of decisions need made. We've got an election coming up, and so, Lord, we just pray that you just guide and direct and just be with each and every one of these folks standing before us here tonight or this morning, and just bless this meeting, and we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, thank you. It's nice, Sue, let me chair one more meeting. Thank you. So if I start talking, you guys just tell me to shut up. Okay. Do we have any announcements or correspondence? You got anything, Sue?
No.
Jasmine, you got anything?
No, I do not.
Any of the department heads?
No.
Okay. We do not have any scheduled meeting guests. The minutes. Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that we... Let's see, we just have to sign... What minutes do we need to read? Okay, we got nine fifteen, what about our last? I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the minutes from nine fifteen twenty twenty-five meeting.
So moved.
You second that?
All right, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, do we...
Now, we had those two public hearings.
Yeah, but I think that we already approved those.
Did we already approve of that?
I'm pretty sure we did.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
Okay, now the agenda. Are there any additions or subtractions? Roy, did we get that executive session on?
Uh, no, that's gonna need to be in addition.
Okay. I'm gonna make a motion that we add an executive session. What do we consider for the...
Compensation of a public employee.
Compensation of a public employee.
So moved.
Okay.
All right, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Okay, so... So Jasmine, I did sign the purchase orders, but now technically we don't have to sign the purchase orders anymore, right?
Well, we are going to discuss that today.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I'm making a motion that we acknowledge the purchase orders.
Second, oh, um, you make the motion and I'll second it.
Yeah, I made the motion, yeah.
No, no, I'll second it.
Okay.
All right, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, and then I'm gonna make a motion. I have reviewed and signed the warrants. Just need a second.
Second.
All right, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Now is the time for public comments. Okay, Tom?
Tom Johnson?
Hey, Joe. I don't wanna cheat anytime. I'll wait till Joe has his setup here. Good morning. My name is Thomas Johnson. I'm a candidate for township trustee here in Brimfield and also the chair of the zoning board. But today I'd like to speak as a citizen of Brimfield Township. And last night we had an event that was well-attended. If you missed it, you missed a really informative group of folks there that are running for the positions. One of the issues that came up, which I think we might have wanna review, is that one of the candidates mentioned that any replacements to the board of the BZA or the zoning board should be reviewed by the trustees and that be interviewed, that individual should be interviewed by the trustees to align their values with that of the trustees. I'm strictly opposed to that. I believe we had a motion and a resolution passed by this board in which they agreed that they should interview the candidate for the BZA. The zoning board's an independent board. It reflects the values of the community. It does not make any resolutions. It only suggests and then forwards that to the trustees so the trustees can review it, have public meetings, get input from the community, and then they pass the resolution to the zoning code. So any influence that the trustees have at the initial evaluation of any changes to the zoning code is unnecessary. And to put someone on there after you vetted them so that they share your values is then you just end up with a committee of yes people. You want independent thought, independent input, so that the trustees have a very good photograph of what the community desires and needs. And we do that through the public hearings. The zoning board has public hearings and has input. So it's very valuable that, that that board stay independent. We don't allow the police chief to come to the trustees with a candidate and say, "You need to interview him so they share your values" as a trustee. The fire department doesn't do that. The road department doesn't do that. But for some reason, the zoning board needs to be done that way. I'm opposed to that. I think this community would be best served by independent minds, not sharing the values of the trustees at all, but having that open dialogue to help guide the community into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Bill Anderson?
Hi, my name's Bill Anderson. I show up to most everything. I was at the meeting last night. I thought it was okay attended. I would've been much happier if there was a hundred and fifty or two hundred people there. One of the things everybody seemed to talk about and have the most complaints about was zoning. And, uh, and the way zoning is going. But just wanted to let you know, for those people that didn't get it or didn't understand it, a couple of years ago, we sent out questionnaires to everybody in the township. Mailed out to everybody with return envelopes, the whole shooting match, just so we could get opinions of what the township wanted. So as we run through zoning, we could direct them in areas that they were interested in. And I think we got like twenty-four responses out of the whole township. So, you know, people gotta know out there that we do ask the community, we did ask the community what their input was. Those that filled out the questionnaires, we looked at that information and, uh, and we move forward in a zoning method. So zoning is out there to protect the people of the township and to go in the route that all the residents want us to go in. So I agree with Tom. Zoning is an independent board. Needs to be independent. And those people that have the expertise of who they're hiring, those are the people that interview zoning members. And not to have somebody, if you're sitting on zoning, to go through an interview process every year just to see if you agree with trustees is totally wrong. That's all I have to say.
Hey, Bill, I got one question for you. When they did that envelope, didn't they also organize a bus trip where you guys could all drive?
That was before.
That was before?
That was before Michael's here, and I did go on that bus trip.
And was that well-attended, or...?
Probably... There was two buses. And probably, yeah, probably forty people altogether. I thought it was informative. I never knew some of the development in the township that was there existed. It's kinda like hiding, which is a good thing.
Right, 'cause I thought, I thought there was an opportunity for people to see it.
There was several years ago.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay. Any more questions? Is there any safety concerns? Hey Dave, did you get any salt? Did that come through yet?
No, we are still going back and forth trying to get an answer.
It's not time to start asking people to hit their cupboards and bring salt in?
No, we're all right, yeah.
Okay.
We got, we got fifty tons.
But you're still waiting on your summer solars?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that could be a safety concern.
I don't have any safety concerns.
Okay, well, thank you, Sue. Okay, well, now we, now's the time where we open up the meeting for department heads, and this is our business portion of the meeting. So let's start with the police department.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. Just a couple items for you guys this morning. We're gonna have officers in training all next week going through range training. I do have one item under new business that's gonna need board approval. So we're in the planning process now for the retirement of our current K-9 recon and looking to his end of life as far as patrol goes. Part of that planning process is for the first quarter of the year, we'll be implementing a new, bringing on board a new K-9 handler, so we'll have a process as part of that. But we also need to select a provider that we're gonna obtain the new dog from, as well as the provider will also provide training for the selected K-9 handler. So I put some communication in your folder for the trustees to review, and we looked at a couple different providers, but based upon the recommendation of our internal staff, both Sergeant Connor and Captain Atkins are certified K-9 trainers. We'd like to go with Vanderhoss Gill, German Shepherds and Police K-9 Academy for the purchase of our new dog in 2026, and they'll also provide the initial certification for our new handler. And that's a six-week process. As far as the timing of this, we're not making the purchase today, but what this does and what I need board approval for is for me to send a letter of intent to them, which basically becomes a placeholder and allows us to have a spot selected for a litter of dogs that are coming in. So that purchase won't actually be made until 2026 out of our 2026 budget, but I do need authorization for a letter of intent.
I would like to make a motion that we accept the chief's recommendation of a letter of intent for our dog program. And it says here the actual purchase to be made in the first quarter of 2026 from the Brimfield Police Department budget funds.
Okay, I will second that. And that K-9 unit is definitely a good unit. It's definitely...
Yeah, Sergeant Connor, this is, he's had multiple dogs, and Dave is getting to the point now in his career where he's ready to step away from that and just focus on his role as an officer and a sergeant. So part of this will also be an opportunity for an officer to take over as a new K-9 handler, so kind of coincide. New dog and new handler.
I think it's been nothing but good since it's come to the township. So... Okay. So we just need a vote.
All right, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And the second item I need board approval on is to accept a donation. The police department received a fifty-dollar donation to the Brimfield PD K-9 program from Frank and Kathleen Leevack. So I need board approval to accept that fifty-dollar donation.
Okay, I will make that motion and thank them for their donation.
I'll second that.
All right, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And that's all I have for you this morning.
Thank you, Roy. Chief Malali?
Okay. Just informative information here. We're done working on the dive trailer. I kinda updated you briefly on the piece of equipment that we've been working on in the fire station. We're working on the dive trailer for the county, hoping that that was a piece of equipment that would be left at our station, being that we're surrounded by water. The county has decided that that would move to another station, and that's okay. We're willing to help out, but that will be moving out of our station in about another week from now.
Where is it gonna be moved to?
Actually, they're moving it to Marlboro, which would be out of the county. I didn't understand the exact thought on that, but not my decision on that, so... So we did do our, our help on that, and it's moving to Marlboro for that, so... But that will be moving out shortly. The firefighters that have went to the fire academy, they're at their halfway point. I spoke to them the other day. They're having a great time down there and doing well. So, so they're doing good, as expected.
How many people do we have down there in that program?
We have three.
Three?
In the program right now, and they're, they're having a good time and ranking in the higher end of the class, which is what we expect. So, that's good. And then the only thing I need a board approval on is we did accept a five-hundred-dollar donation from a residence that husband passed away, and I have the check that was already given to Jasmine, and I, I don't wanna say the name, because I don't think it's appropriate, so...
Well, who's gonna send the thank you?
Oh, we have that all set up.
You got the thank you letter already sent?
We already have that all set up, but I would like to accept the five-hundred-dollar donation.
Okay, good.
Well, you guys would have to accept that, I guess, so...
Yeah, well, I'll make a motion that we accept the five-hundred-dollar donation and thank them for their donation for the fire department.
Second.
All right, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Administration. Roy, are you gonna handle this end, or...?
Yeah, sure. Uh, just a couple of items for you as well under admin today. Just an update for you under new business. We had a meeting with our healthcare broker on nine twenty-five. They're going out to bid for healthcare, obviously looking at our current provider, which is Humor Care, as well as potential opportunities for other providers. As a follow-up to that, once they get that information back to that and we get the data in hand, we'll be reaching out to the members of each of the departments and union representatives of the department to discuss that going forward, as well as bringing it up to the board. So that's just an ongoing process. We want to give the board an update that once we get some data in hand, that was gonna drive decision-making going forward. There was an item on here as well from the board that you'd like to discuss the remaining meeting dates for 2025.
Right, I'm just, uh, thanks for putting that on there. I'm just a little worried about some of the dates. So, what do you, you got the calendar right in front of you?
I do, yeah.
Here's...
I think we're...
Right here, the fifteenth of October.
Okay, now Sue and I are both gonna be gone on the fifteenth of this month, so that means there will only be one trustee here.
We could do it on Thursday the sixteenth or meet on Monday the thirteenth.
Yeah, it'll be up to you guys, because I'm gonna be out of state.
Me too. But I'm not going to the same state that you're going to.
Okay, so Sue, what would you, what do you think? I'm not sure what would work for Nick.
Well, why don't we get with Nick and see which one of these three days, Thursday or Monday, would work for him?
Okay.
And then we can set it up.
Okay.
Get it out that way. Okay.
And so then the other one, Roy, would be Thanksgiving?
The week of Thanksgiving, your meeting is...
On, that's Christmas.
The day before Thanksgiving?
You are Tuesday, November twenty-fifth at six o'clock PM currently.
It's the evening meeting on the twenty-fifth of November.
So what do you guys think?
I'll be here for that one.
Okay. There's probably a good chance I can be here for that one, so that would not be a problem then.
Okay.
And you have Wednesday, December tenth, and you have Monday, December twenty-second.
The twenty-second.
December tenth, so that should be...
Good, it's Christmas.
So that should probably be good.
Nobody wants to come in here on Christmas Eve.
Right.
Or after Christmas.
So that should work on the Monday.
The twenty, the twenty-second.
Yeah, I'll be down this whole week.
Okay.
So, okay, well, I think we could probably leave him then. I think, I think we might be okay, Roy. Roy, you see any goals?
No, you wanna keep the date for the fifteenth for now and then follow up?
Yeah, let, let them, till you talk to Nick.
Nick can decide which one he, which works in with his schedule.
Okay.
Okay, so no action, no action on that.
Okay. Under new business, I do have one item for board approval this morning. This is approval of the HVAC system in the old town hall area. That is in the amount of fourteen thousand three hundred ninety dollars from Banks Heating and Cooling. Payable initially from JET funds, but this purchase will be reimbursed through NOPEC grant funding. So it'll be the expense on the front end, but the reimbursement on the back end through NOPEC. Joe put a lot of work into gathering information on this, so we got a couple of quotes in the foreword that we provided for you today. Banks was the recommended one from the quotes, and I also happen to be the lower bidder of the two as well. Joe, do you have any specifics you wanna add about that at all, or any follow-up on that?
Um, 'cause I got three, I got three companies from out. Banks, uh, looking at under budget, we're actually in a more efficient system. So we're getting a more efficient system, more less money, and they are a Brimfield resident and Brimfield business. So it's a local, keeping the money local.
Yes, yes, Banks is the Brimfield company.
Right. Okay, well, what's the backstory on this? So that, our unit wasn't nothing, we didn't get a new unit during the renovation?
Yeah, this is, 'cause it's, go ahead, Joe, you can touch on that.
No, the, the heating and cooling of the original town hall was not part of the scope of the renovation. It was to be left in place. When we moved in, we really weren't utilizing that part of the building initially. It was also, that was part of the building that was done last. So it wasn't until summer that we realized that the air conditioning wasn't working. We brought out, actually, it was a...
So that's, that's that old unit we've had problems with over and over again?
Uh, it's a twelve-year-old unit, based on the date on it. So it's not terribly old, but it is old enough that the cost to repair is primitive to, uh, to do it. It uses an older refrigerant, which is harder to get. The, where the repair is, it's difficult to repair. The leak is the coil outside, so it's not an area that you can repair easily. So we could be pouring money at it and really wouldn't have any value. So it was a big recommendation of the gentleman who came out, in addition to, you know, I asked the same question of the things that you get pulled on the unit that it was replaced. In addition, during the holding phase, it was discovered that the furnace is not installed code. And whether that was done additionally when it was installed twenty years ago, or if that was stuff that happened during the renovation, we're not sure about the venting and fresh air intake of furnace needs to be done and all stuff. So we addressed now the cooling, but we also addressed the heat.
So we're gonna have a more energy-efficient, I'm sure it's better than...
Yes, we're going to a ninety-five percent efficient system.
Yeah, I was just worried that that was part of the, the new update, but yeah.
No, it was, it was not part of the scope. It was left alone, and it wasn't until we started utilizing that portion of the building that we realized that we were actually going to.
Okay, well, well, Joe, thanks for looking into it.
Do we have any recollection of how long that furnace that is in there now? How many years that's been in there?
Well, that's, if it's, I don't know. I just know, I just know we've had...
Based on the serial number, they're saying about twelve years.
Okay.
I just know we've had problems with that unit.
Yeah. Okay. Well, here we have a, we have, we have a, a grant with NOPEC for reimbursement for the cost. So that would be grant money, that wouldn't be tax money paying for that.
Hey, you wanna make a motion?
Yeah, so moved.
Okay, and I'm gonna second it for discussion.
Okay.
Okay, I think we're discussed. Okay. Well, I think, like I said, Joe, I appreciate you looking into that. You're going above and beyond.
All right, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And that's all I have for you under administration today.
Thank you, Roy. Hey, Roy, thanks for what you're doing these last... You have really smoothed things out. So... Mike, congratulations, old grandpa.
Thank you. Um, zoning fees to date, seventy, or sixty-two thousand, five forty-two eighty-five. Our new business updates. Meyer Electrical Vehicle Charging Station is on construction underway. Menard's Electrical Vehicle Charging Station is on the agenda for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Dirk Mart is scheduled to open mid-November. Exact date is to follow. And then Woodland Reserve Grand Opening is scheduled for October fourteenth at noon. Food trucks are gonna be there at the opening, and then we'll have more to follow from their marketing. And then as far as new homes, we have eleven new single-family homes this year, and then not added on this, but there's eleven new condos. So there's a total of twenty-two new homes this year. And that concludes my report.
I just wanted, Mr. Man, I just wanted to ask you, do you recall how, that new development going in on Townage? Do you, do you recall how many actual homes is, are they looking to put in there?
Yeah, I believe there was a hundred and twenty-six off the top of my head.
A hundred, a hundred and twenty-six?
If it gets approved.
If it's approved, okay.
So it's a conditional use within the, um, the districts, the two districts that they were going into was R-three and R-four, which is a medium-high-density residential.
So a hundred and twenty-six.
But it, it's still at regional planning for consideration.
Well, I just wanna comment, I attended the, um, meeting last night for the people running for township trustee. And it was commented that there were four hundred homes coming in there, and that didn't sound right. So I just wanted to clarify that. You said there's a hundred and twenty-six right now.
Yeah, a hundred and twenty-six, and then for this year, total, we have four, twenty-two new homes.
Okay.
Homes and condos.
Homes and condos is twenty-two.
Homes and condos, okay, thank you very much.
And then we're averaging, you know, right around thirty homes a year is what we average, since I've been here since two thousand eighteen, so...
Okay, thank you.
Hey, I've heard lots of good comments about Dollar, Dollar General.
Oh, Dollar General came out really nice.
Yeah.
We, we worked hard, 'cause it was a town center. We wanted that architectural look, look different than the other Dollar Generals you see in the area, so that whole, you know, facade of brick, and with the fake windows in the front.
Looks good.
Along the side.
Yeah, I did have a question from a couple, it was a lady. She wanted to know when that Hallmark Card Store is open.
I don't have an official date yet.
Okay.
But I'll get, I'll get one for you guys.
Yeah, she, she wanted to know if it's gonna carry, I guess they're known for their...
Their cards.
Their Christmas decorations or something.
Okay, I'll find out.
So, it's, it's not a big deal. I just wasn't sure.
Sure.
So... Okay, well, thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Okay, road departments.
All righty, just, I got some updates and stuff. The Sherman Road paving project's going on very well. Uh, they're on the last few blocks of new concrete they're putting in down there. Uh, the chip and seal project, they, they concluded, they, they swept the roads off, they got the roads all lined, striped and everything. There is a punch list, but it probably won't be handled until next spring because of the temperatures of the season. Uh, we started crack sealing the roadways this week. Finally got a machine in. We'll be crack sealing quite a few developments, what we can do for the next two to three weeks, depending on weather. Uh, some new updates. We have some dump trucks over being worked on at TSI. Uh, just winter maintenance stuff, getting things, make sure they're up to snuff and ready to go for the wintertime. Uh, they're finding a few little repairs we need to do on each certain trucks, but they're, they'll all be ready to go for the winter. Uh, let the board know. JD Striping is starting to paint our road striping in the township. I have them moving forward. They're, uh, they're getting all the, all the striping arrows, all that stuff taken care of in the township on the township roads. Uh, I can't remember, well, let's do this though before I get to this part, but, uh, I'd like to thank ABC Landscaping. They do our cemetery work. Uh, they came over, they had a few weeks of downtime, so they sent some guys over here to straighten up the town hall a little bit, pull the weeds out of the flower beds, uh, edge the sidewalks, did a little bit of work at the police station, some more work at the cemetery and that kinda stuff, and, uh, I'd just like to thank them for that. They could've just collected our money and not did nothing because of the way the weather's been, but they came across with something, a good idea, and asked if they could do it, and we agreed to it. So they did, actually did a really nice job out here, so... Now the fun part. Uh, I need board's approval, and I can't remember if I did this before. I've had too much stuff going on, but, uh, I'd like board's approval. I'd like to remove and the sale of dump truck number twenty-four. It's a two thousand one international dump truck. Uh, I would like to also remove and sell and sell of the twenty-fourteen equipment trailer and the old zoning truck, which is a two thousand six. I would like to take and sell them and, uh, take them to Edinburgh Auction and auction them off and remove them from the shop area before they get any more deteriorated.
Okay. Well, I will make that motion, Dave, that we, uh, Well, I will make that motion, Dave, that we, uh, approve, uh, the removal and sale of dump truck number twenty-four, the twenty-fourteen equipment trailer and the old zoning truck from two thousand six. Well, that's an old truck.
Do we, do we wanna add that they be taken to the Edinburgh Auction in the motion?
Okay, and take them to the Edinburgh Auction.
I'll second that.
Okay, well, I'm glad you're getting some of that stuff out of there. Yeah, well, speaking of getting stuff, did you ever get rid of that Corvette?
No.
It's still sitting down there?
Yes.
How do we get rid of it?
Push it in the woods. No, I, it's, we're still waiting for this type.
Oh, okay.
So, I, I don't know, that's.
You might not be able to push it in the woods if it's this much.
Oh, I can get rid of it.
Oh, okay.
I have equipment to get rid of that real quick, but.
Okay. Okay, well, just a roll call?
All right, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, and that concludes my report for today.
Thank you, Dave.
I'll do, I'll do Cassie's report.
Sounds great. Okay, it's your turn. Parks and Recs.
Parks and Recs. Cassie isn't with us today, but she did leave a report, I wanna share that with you. Um, upcoming programs, uh, there is a Boo Cruise, registrations are open until October the fifth. So that has to do with Halloween. Then, uh, October the eleventh, the Boo Cruise kickoff outdoor movie is six-thirty at the, um, library here in town. The, we'll not be doing a pumpkin roll this year at the dog park because we don't have volunteers to help that program, actually. But the deer are gonna miss out on having the pumpkins to eat. November the thirtieth is hometown Christmas, the field choir will be attending. And Jennifer Shear and Girl Scout Troop nine-one-one-zero-five will be refinishing the nat, the nativity scene for the event. And right now Cassie is working on collaborations with Kent State in their Division of Parks Tourism Management. And she met with a class on September thirtieth to develop programs for Brimfield, for our Brimfield Parks for their final projects, so this is all part of them getting their degree. And the Kent State GIS class, they visited the Maguire Park on September the thirtieth for class projects to create a map for us for Maguire Park. And this is done at no cost. Under new business, Kent State has an adventure center, working with Kent State to provide camping, a summer camp, and possibly a kayak instruction for us in two thousand twenty-six. And the Parks Community Forum is going to meet November the sixth, from six o'clock to eight o'clock at the town hall. And she's requesting the community input on their parks programs, their events, community partnerships and projects. So she's asking people in our community that are interested in our parks that they come to this meeting so we can get feedback for what, what we, what we want. And so that concludes her report.
Okay, well, thank you, Sue, for doing that. Okay, Joe, information, technology?
Okay, um, so for, uh, old business update, um, I completed the link between the road garage and the community center.
Can he talk to me?
We can't hear you very much.
Can't hear you.
Sorry, let me move the microphone up closer?
Yes, thank you.
Um, I finished the, uh, well, called the last site wifi link. So we're linking the network of the community center and the road garage together. Uh, the advantage of that is no longer do we need to have an internet connection in each building. So now that the two buildings are linked, that will save the township about a hundred and thirty dollars per month by not having two internet connections. So it, it costs savings that we're trying to do. Um, so that'll start next month with the savings. Uh, for new business, um, I was asked to talk about, uh, IT regulations, um, a lot of changes, a lot of, uh, regulations came out this year, and a lot of regulations are coming out for next year, um, in regards to IT between the, from the federal government and the state of Ohio. Um, a lot of those, we have implemented, um, this year already, and a few will be implemented in the first quarter of next year. And I just wanted to highlight three of them. So the first two that I've already handled for this year that are now gonna be required for next year are, our website has to meet new ADA requirements. Um, we did that, or we board approved all those changes, um, in, uh, this, this spring. So our website is already compliant with, uh, the new two thousand twenty-six, uh, Americas with Disability Act requirement. So on our website, we have the tools provided to allow people that have, um, maybe color blindness, or maybe they're visually impaired, um, where the webs, you can hit a button and the website will then describe pictures to you. It'll interact with their ADA compliant hardware, so maybe they're visually impaired and they have a tool that describes or reads texts to them. Our website is compliant with those tools, um, as, as a requirement that, um, we have to have for next year, and we already are compliant with that. Um, in addition, one of the things that was implemented this year was a cybersecurity plan. Um, I put together our cybersecurity plan for the township, um, we provide training, our training is provided to our township employees. Um, we do quarterly, um, training modules, and we do, uh, we will be doing quarterly, um, cybersecurity tests. Pretty much a, an email is sent out to make sure that they're, they're compliant with not falling for phishing schemes or, or other things. Um, and that is a requirement that the state of Ohio requires. Um, we also have to do, uh, annual, what's called penetration testing. We have an outside entity that, what's called ethically hacks. We have someone on the outside that will attempt to attack the township's network externally and make sure that there's no vulnerabilities. Um, and we do that, and we are compliant with that, uh, requirement. Uh, one of the things that's going to be coming for next year, and I've already, I've already started working with Jasmine on the additional costs, um, we have to hit a new level of security for our township email. Um, we need, there are certain elements of, um, our communication, um, in regards to our police department, where emails have to be encrypted when they're sent out. Um, so we will have to hit a new level of, uh, encryption requirements for our internal and external email communications, uh, next year. Um, so we'll have some additional costs unfortunately to hit those requirements. Um, but it's just, it's just the nature of, of how IT works and between the federal government and the state of Ohio having new requirements for that. So, a lot, a lot of things to, to keep up with, um, with a ever-changing IT area, but I, I feel we're on par. You're just keeping up with it all.
Okay, so you have any questions? You have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, Mike, you're doing a great job.
Okay, well, thank you, Joe.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we have had, uh, we have five cemetery deeds to sign, so we've signed those.
Right, we have five, five cemetery, five new cemetery deeds to sign.
Okay, that's done. Okay, now it's Jasmine's turn.
All right, um, for old business, um, first thing, consideration of the proposed takeover of the Whispering Woods, um, inter sign and including that in the lighting district. I did, um, speak with the prosecutor's office, and they did say that it is our discretion if you want to take over that, um, that additional cost. So it is about seventy dollars a month, I believe, um, that there is a outstanding balance of four, a little over four hundred dollars. Um, I did speak with Ralph, he did say the HOA is willing to pay for it if we would like them to do that. Um, but, um, Heaven did say that she is unsure if that's common or has occurred in Brimfield before, but she did say, you typically, with the lighting districts, the residents usually, um, help pay for those street lights, but they will not help pay for that sign, so we will be a hundred percent, have to take over that cost.
So wouldn't come out of the lighting, of their lighting fee?
No, so we would, that'd just be a cost on us. So it'd be an additional seventy dollars a month.
Do we have any other, um, big signs in the township like that, that we've, we're paying that electricity on theirs? Or is this, is this the first time that it's been asked? They do have a homeowners association over there.
Right.
My opinion, I think the homeowners association, um, unless we do that for everybody, you do it for one, you gotta do it for everybody.
Right.
Yes, that is true. So I can go back to the HOA and, and discuss that with them.
Yeah, I mean, I just think we're opening up a cleaner room.
I do too.
Okay.
I think so.
Especially, you know, we're trying to watch what we're spending.
Right, I agree.
Okay, so we really don't have to make a motion on this as of yet, right?
Nope, no, we do not. Um, next item, as we're going back and revisiting, um, the purchase orders, I did, did send out, uh, guidance from AOS and some of the trainings I went through as far as limits go, as far as approving those for purchase orders. So signing and approving purchase orders is at the sole discretion of the fiscal officer, unless the board approves that there is amount that you are uncomfortable with me so solely signing purchase orders on, and especially blanket purchase orders, soup, yeah, blanket purch, purchase orders.
But for some reason, I thought I heard a, figure was sold out, about seven thousand bucks or something, anything over seven, is that, is that right? Is that what I heard, or?
I did hear five, I'm not sure.
Okay.
But that, like I said, that, that is.
We've been doing five now.
Yeah, we have been doing five.
So we're basically just continuing what we're doing?
Yes.
In essence.
Yep.
The only thing is, we just wouldn't have to do the.
You just wouldn't have to physically sign. But you would still be able to review all purchase order, but I would just be the sole signature on them.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna make a motion in the positive that we approve, approve, uh, this automated clearinghouse payments for vendors who accept them and transitioning to virtual signatures for purchase orders, MPOs. So I just need a second so we can discuss it.
Um, I will second that for discussion. Yeah, my discussion is, I'm, I'm thinking here that this would be, uh, an issue of these payments. I'm trying to figure out here, how will the township trustee, how will we know, uh, the amount of money that is going out with ACH? I do ACH with my payments and my stuff at the house, but I don't know how we would, how, how we, we would be able to know what's going on till after it's done.
So with ACH, you, we still can print vouchers. So we still, you still are able to receive vouchers, just like we print out physical checks. We can print out an ACH voucher for you to be able to view.
Okay, well, I'm trying to think far enough into the future, and right now, everything hinges on the election in November. So I would, I would suggest that we hold this in abeyance until December, till we find out who, what, where, when and why with the election results.
Yeah, my, my one concern is, at least when we have to sign them.
Mm-hmm.
It forces trustees to look at the money that's going out, even if it, it doesn't matter, you know, I mean, it's just, I mean, I do like knowing, you know, what we're paying and stuff, but like, I mean, I got no problem, you guys wait until you get the new board on.
Yeah, I, I would really like to see the new board on.
That's totally fine, but just, I just wanna do a statement of, of clarification. Just because it's an ACH does not mean that you will not be informed of what's being paid prior to it being paid. So you will, you will still receive the same notification, so just like you have paper checks that you sign, you will have a voucher that, that you could sign if you wanted to, or just a view for your, um, for your, just for your information. Um, so it, it wouldn't change the order of, it's just the method of payment would change. So it's not that you, you won't see any payments going out, it's just that instead of a physical check, we're able to send the payment electronically, that's the only difference.
I'd still like to wait till we find out how the election turns out.
Yep, that's fine.
I see what you're trying to do, and that's a good thing.
I do, I think, I think it's a good idea, but I just wanna be, I just wanna be sure we got all of our bases covered.
All right, sounds good, we'll, we'll table that for further discussion.
Yeah, I'd say table that till December.
Okay. Um, and as far as, as new business, we, I do need board approval for the two thousand twenty-five permanent appropriations resolution. Um, somehow that has slipped through, um, this year, so, uh, the county still has not received our permanent appropriations resolution in order, in order to certify us for any expenditures that we are, um, pursuing. So I do need that approval, I do have that resolution in front of you that lists, um, all the funds and the appropriation limits. So basically, this is the same amendment from June of this year, it's just that it, it just wasn't actually approved.
Okay, well, I will make a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-five permanent appropriations resolution. I just need a second.
Second, do you wanna read it? Be it resolved? You want me to read it?
Yeah, go ahead.
This is the resolution. Be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of Brimfield Township, Portage County, Ohio, that to provide for the current expenses and other expenditures of said Board of Trustees during the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. The following accounts sums are hereby set aside and appropriated for the several purposes for which expenditures are to be made for and during said fiscal year as follows. Then it, it lists all of the, the departments and all the things that would be going out. And then it says, uh, trustee seconded, and then the roll call was made. Okay.
So we have a motion on the floor, any more discussions?
No.
All right, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
Okay, and we have gotten.
And the last is the, the liquor permits from the Ohio Department of Commerce notice.
Okay, so these are in reference to.
I think this is the Wing, Wing Warehouse.
The Wing Warehouse, and we got the two, um, Town Center Field Park and Brimfield Township Park. We're required to, to, to do this because they are within five hundred, right, five hundred feet of, of these. So basically, what they're asking us is, do we, do we wanna go and challenge it?
If you wanna object, then go have a hearing.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, so I always, you gotta make a motion in the positive, so, but, uh, so I probably gotta make two separate motions?
Why would you make a motion, if you want your motion, if you, frame your motion that you, motion to me you want to have, you want to object to that and go have a hearing, and then put that up to vote for the trustees. If you vote no on that, then you're saying no, we're not objecting, we don't wanna have the hearing. So frame the motion in, we want, we're objecting and requesting a hearing, that motion will fail, and then you're not having an objection, and there won't be a hearing.
And this, this is for the Wing Warehouse?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, but do we have to separate them, or since it's all on property, just probably put them in one?
Just one.
Right. So I'm gonna make a motion in the positive that, uh, we do wanna have a, if we, that we wanna have a public, or a hearing down in Columbus.
Second.
Okay.
Any discussion or anything? No? Good. All right, Mike?
No.
Sue?
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all for fiscal.
Thank you. Okay, so now it's the end of our business part of the meeting, we do have a executive session, which.
Hey, Mike, real quick, before you do that, I want to, um, just bring to your attention, one item we discussed on administration was meeting dates. Um, that particular week of, uh, the Wednesday meeting that you're not gonna be able to have, just FYI, that Monday is a holiday. So I know you were looking at some alternative dates, so that may limit your options to something else. I know you were considering maybe Thursday, but just wanna make you aware of that Monday.
Why don't we, uh, I mean, we don't have to have it this time, let's, let's schedule it for the next meeting.
Well, that is your next meeting.
Oh, that's the next meeting. That's the holiday, huh?
Well, that Monday is a holiday, if you were considering moving it to Monday.
Columbus Day.
Yeah, so Monday's not gonna be an option.
What's the date of it?
The thirteenth is Columbus Day.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm gonna be out of town, so I, it's gonna be up to you and Nick.
So then, Nick, we're looking at the sixteenth then? For that, for the next meeting? Or Friday?
Well, can't we, uh, why don't you make it, you know, vote for the sixteenth, and then if there's an issue, we change it, just so we get something on the books.
Okay, I was, I'll make the motion. I move that our, due to, uh, due to our scheduling of our board, um, I move that we have our next meeting on the sixteenth of October at eight o'clock in the morning.
Okay, and I'll second that.
Okay.
And somebody will just have to talk to Nick and find out. Okay?
Okay, all right, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Motion passes.
So, clarifying, that's Thursday the sixteenth, correct?
Right.
Okay.
October the sixteenth.
Okay, so, I'm gonna make this motion, this date, October first, twenty twenty five, trustee Kostenski moved to convene executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, one twenty-one dot twenty twenty, twenty-two G for the purpose of consideration of the following matter, compensation of a public employee or official. Except as otherwise provided the law, no public body should hold an executive session for the discipline of an elected official for conduct related to the performance of the elected official's official duties or for the elected official's move from office. If a public body holds an executive session pursuant to Division G one of this section, the motion vote hold that, hold that executive sessions shall state which one or more approved listed in Division G one of this section are the purpose where executives' session is to be held, but needed not included. The name of the person needs to be considered at the meeting. Okay. Okay, we just need a roll call.
All right, Mike?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And just, uh, let people, uh, the people I'd like to have in the meeting would be, uh, Jasmine, Roy, Dave Ruffner, Sue, and myself. Okay? Is there anything for the good of Brimfield Township, real quick? Everyone's good? Okay, well, thank you, thank you all for coming.
God bless with breath in these lungs, life too short to play it on speedrun. Only get one, no option to rerun, where the Babylon going so high to reach them? Down to earth, they grind up stones come, rat race only one to run from. Better say cheese with sand spread in the floods, living in the moment, I ain't worried about none. I'm straight chilling, back against the wall to equate with the feeling. Michael lost the bar, find a way if I'm willing. Only fear God, not sweating his lost children. Price on my head, exploiting a few trillion. suicide missions whenever I'm feeling. I'm built different, cruise with no ceiling. Sun shining on me, boy, I'm in different. Go! Yeah, 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 yeah. Come on, come on, come on, let's go. I don't know who comes next, but I couldn't care less. I refuse to feel stressed, there's no fear in my chest. Hear the boom of my stairs, walk away from the pain I've been through. This feeling, I'm feeling is brand new, this is the moment I break through. I ain't really with that back four, if you can keep the hustle, homie, I can bear it all. Bullheaded, in the market like you asked for, then I saw you. Brought a target like a matador. Come on, I'm ready to go, get it like a Labrador. Dog days done and I'm tired of the tug of war. Broke off the leash and I ain't going back no more. I'm a better rapper after life, bear more. Hold up, let me reset, living in the mainstream, shoot the sequence. I cracked the code, popped out the subnet. Walk around like I found a twenty, that's a death step. Living in the moment, did you notice that ain't up yet? You can put the pressure on me, I ain't dropping one sweat. Who's to be stressed, heart beating like a drum set. Breathe stress, let it go, everybody need a refresh. Go! Yeah, 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 yeah. Come on, come on, come on, let's go. I don't know who comes next, but I couldn't care less. I refuse to feel stressed, there's no fear in my chest. Hear the boom of my stairs, walk away from the pain I've been through. This feeling, I'm feeling is brand new, this is the moment I break through. I don't know who comes next, but I couldn't care less. I refuse to feel stressed, there's no fear in my chest. Hear the boom of my stairs, walk away from the pain I've been through. This feeling, I'm feeling is brand new, this is the moment I break through.
Can't eat, can't sleep, can't drink, can't think, can't breathe, can't be alone. Can't coke, can't smoke, can't crash, can't choke, so broke, can't be alone. But I can hear it coming, from a thousand miles away. Yeah, I can hear it coming, I just don't know what to say, don't know what to say. And I can see it swinging, as it's coming back around. Yeah, I can see it swinging, I know it's gonna take me down, gonna take me down. Can't eat, can't sleep, can't drink, can't think, can't breathe, can't be alone. Can't coke, can't smoke, can't crash, can't choke, so broke, can't be alone. But I can hear it coming, from a thousand miles away. Yeah, I can hear it coming, I just don't know what to say, don't know what to say. And I can see it swinging, as it's coming back around. Yeah, I can see it swinging, I know it's gonna take me down, gonna take me down. Can't eat, can't sleep, can't drink, can't think, can't breathe, can't be alone. Can't coke, can't smoke, can't crash, can't choke, so broke, can't be alone. But I can hear it coming, from a thousand miles away. Yeah, I can hear it coming, I just don't know what to say, don't know what to say. And I can see it swinging, as it's coming back around. Yeah, I can see it swinging, I know it's gonna take me down, gonna take me down. And I can see it swinging as it's coming back around. Yeah, I can see it swinging. I know it's gonna take me down, gonna take me down. Time is an illusion. What's the meaning of freedom? Everybody wants to be one. Just try to remember to keep on truckin'. Listen to the silence like infinite horizons. Future like a rerun. Standing on the verge of a new history. You go, I go, we go, we go together. You go, I go, we go, we go together. Everything is stronger than nothing stops us always moving. You go, I go, we go, we go together. When we're deep dreaming, maps are not needed. Stick to believing, wishing on every star in the sky. What are you feeling when the motorbike's speeding? Love is the beacon washing over us like a sunset daydream. You go, I go, we go, we go together. You go, I go, we go, we go together. Everything is stronger than nothing stops us always moving. You go, I go, we go, we go together. When we're deep dreaming, maps are not needed. Stick to believing, wishing on every star in the sky. What are you feeling when the motorbike's speeding? Love is the beacon washing over us like a sunset daydream. You go, I go, we go, we go together. Everything is stronger than nothing stops us always moving. You go, I go, we go, we go together. When we're deep dreaming, maps are not needed. Stick to believing, wishing on every star in the sky. What are you feeling when the motorbike's speeding? Love is the beacon washing over us like a sunset daydream. You go, I go, we go, we go together. Everything is stronger than nothing stops us always moving. You go, I go, we go, we go together. When we're deep dreaming, maps are not needed. Stick to believing, wishing on every star in the sky. What are you feeling when the motorbike's speeding? Love is the beacon washing over us like a sunset daydream. You go, I go, we go, we go together. Everything is stronger than nothing stops us always moving. You go, I go, we go, we go together. When we're deep dreaming, maps are not needed. Stick to believing, wishing on every star in the sky. What are you feeling when the motorbike's speeding? Love is the beacon washing over us like a sunset daydream. You go, I go, we go, we go together. Everything is stronger than nothing stops us always moving. You go, I go, we go, we go together. When we're deep dreaming, maps are not needed. Stick to believing, wishing on every star in the sky. What are you feeling when the motorbike's speeding? Love is the beacon washing over us like a sunset daydream. You go, I go, we go, we go together. Everything is stronger than nothing stops us always moving. You go, I go, we go, we go together. Really don't care.
Obsession and uh after a couple meetings, we finally reached an agreement with the employment agreement between Grimfield Township Board of Trustees and the Grimfield Township Roads Superintendent Dave Ruffner, who has done an amazing job there. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve his new contract that is from October 1st, 2025 to December 31st, 2028.
On second.
Okay, no more discussion. Okay, I'm ready for roll call.
All right, Mike.
Yes.
Sue.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thanks Dave for helping out, you did a great job. Take some time off.
Yeah, next year.
Thanks Jasmine for putting this together.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion then we end this meeting.
Second. All right, Mike.
Yes.
Sue.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, thank you.
Nice.